...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guess we'll award the Park Pavilion painting bid.
How many do we have?
One.
Oh, okay. Oh, there we are. One of these folks had a...
New Ross.
Really, new Ross, I'll be darned.
Cassie and Sons.
Well Jeff, I assume you looked over all this?
No.
Nope, I haven't seen it.
Oh, you haven't seen it, we just opened it, oh, well there you go.
No, it was open, it was open Friday, so...
Oh, that's right, that's right. They have insurance. So the wish, the painting, everything, it's white already, correct?
I already saw it.
Are they spraying, brushing? Pressure washed, cleaned, loose paint chips removed, wood prepped, should be collected as best possible, ready to break, we shop back, etc. Would it be primed with a heel bonding primer, where bare wood is showing? All previous painted surface painted two coats, duration exterior satin from Sherwin-Williams. And list the kind of primer in the paint.
How does everybody feel about it?
Like everything else, it's more than we thought.
Well, Park Board recommended, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's just gonna continue to deteriorate.
Right.
Well, it needs, it's gonna have to be taken care of. Well, we'd have to do...
What we're paying for, for them, what's our...
Probably one of the funds from the foundation.
Okay, okay. Well, I'll move.
Second?
Me.
All favor?
Aight.
Eventually, what we're gonna have to look at is some of that wood, I'm told is gonna be in pretty bad shape, so eventually we'll have to do a renovation project on that, but there is federal dollars for national historic preservation. I'll reach out to SHPO and see if we can get a grip on it. Since it's a national historic? What's your opinion of the community crossings?
Well, I went back and I know where I messed up at. When we took the invoice for Milestone last year on that project, the HMA, the asphalt, was seventy-six, nine, and that was in August. When I did my cost estimate in October, I used a figure of ninety dollars, which I thought was gonna be reasonable. The cost per ton came in from Milestone at a hundred and twenty-nine, thirty, so my ninety wasn't even close, and that's a pretty big hit.
So, the total, the total's three-hundred-and-twelve thousand?
Yeah, the total on that, let me pull it up. Yeah, Milestone's bid was three-hundred-and-twelve dollars and six, or three-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars, six-hundred-and-twenty-two and ten cents, and my estimate was two-sixty-eight, oh-ninety-eight, for a difference of forty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-four, ten. Our original twenty-five percent match was sixty-seven thousand, twenty-five, based on the additional forty-five thousand, or forty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-four, ten. That puts our new out-of-pocket cost at one-eleven, five-forty-nine, ten. So, like I said, we basically have two choices, we can go ahead and do that, or we can go ahead and go to call two, decline the project at this time, you know, the cost estimates, and get that back to whatever figure you want the twenty-five percent match to be, that we can handle financially.
Yeah, I went through, looked at what, yeah, we could go up to five-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand total in projects, community crossings. This takes out three-hundred-and-twelve if we do it, so that leaves us with two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand projects we could do total. I mean, we determined the streets needed to be paved, correct, so, and then we have the money to do it, we, 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 we're...
And this included Sugar Tree, right, by the post office?
No, this was just the eight street sections.
We're doing it the second around.
Sugar Tree Alley and Anderson Street were the two that we put off to see what the kind of money we had left over.
Sugar Tree Alley, we got infrastructure, we wanted to put under that, right?
Or wanted to replace the water lines.
I mean, from Market to Michigan.
Yeah.
We've got water line through there, so we're having to replace.
If we take care of that, that's not gonna get the alley to Jefferson Street included, though, right?
Behind the...
Yeah, the one behind the...
No, what we're looking at for Sugar Tree Alley was just the post office section.
Do you have an estimate?
From South Market to Michigan.
Right.
Do you have an estimate on that?
Roger's working on it, I don't have it at this time, the second call is due July first, well, July first is when the first call opens, and it closes the twenty-ninth, I'm sorry, for the second call.
So, what are we looking, to replace the storm sewer in there, and then just a bow, a water out, or we...
A water line in the storm that goes down through, you know where the grade is at Michigan, how it sits really wonky, yeah, we're wanting to have to, we're gonna go with an inverted crown and funnel that water down through the middle, he's gonna have three cash basins, naked pipe down there toward the bottom, will probably also do some ADA work on the south side of the west end, right there by that house, there's about a foot and a half drop off.
It's a big, yeah, it's a big step.
It's a...
Some bigger water line than that?
It's not very big, I'd say four probably at most.
Well, I think where Dave's going, I probably think let's put Anderson on, obviously it's gonna be a very large cost for that, maybe just try to do the alley.
I mean, I'd like to see a cost estimate on the, on the water and storm, and then, I mean, it's gotta be done, but...
It's needed done a long time.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
When you manage to fix it and help it...
I'm sorry, wait, we'd have to do the water part our own, because that can be part of the crossings, right, but the storm would come into it.
So...
Well, is he talking about doing any gutters, curbs, what's he talking about there? What, you got any idea what Roger's looking at?
Yeah, inverted crown with the cash basins, I think there'll probably be some curbs along the sides, and of course, the gutter would be in the middle.
Right, right. Well, so I guess back to the first call here, the first community crossings, which you folks, what do you guys think?
None of it has been done.
We've got, I mean, we've got the money from the state, I mean...
Well, it's fixing a lot of streets that need to be fixed.
Yeah, those are some...
Because there's infrastructure, that's why it's cool.
We need to continue with this program, so...
I say, I'll move.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aight.
You know, back to David's question on that round, I don't know who asked, well, anyway, I think maybe let's have Roger focus on the alley back there, I guess we also, we already have a contract with them to do the Anderson two, though, don't we?
Yes, and he's working on both Sugar Tree Alley and Anderson, and I sent him an email last week, reminded me that the community crossings call two was coming up.
Oh, good.
And I should have some, some cost estimates from him, maybe by the end of the week this week.
So have him add this other section of the alley, is that what we're saying?
Well, we could look at this...
Yeah, I mean, just see what the cost estimates are.
Just to pave behind the middle, the north block of the downtown there, that alley, I guess it's all Sugar Tree.
Yeah, and Anderson, what's he looking to do, curbs and gutters?
Sidewalk on that side.
I was told to go ahead and look at sidewalks and curbs and guttering. Roger was interested in possibly running some storm along the, I wanna say, on the south side of Anderson, down toward where there's an underground pipe that goes across Rockville Road.
Let me ask this question.
Did we not talk about, kinda pulling back on that and just re-circus-ing Anderson, and waiting until we could see if it could either be reclassified?
I was gonna ask you guys if, if, that, that question, if you guys are interested in trying to get that reclassified and...
Well, at one point in time, we were told to requalify, just because it does feed the northeast section of the county. Yeah, getting it requalified, you're looking at along, you know, you're looking five, seven years out before it gets done, which we need that time and incentive to save money.
So we could still try to pave it.
But I, I think we should pave it probably, and see about just paving it. But we'll see what Roger comes up with, he's under contract to do what he's gonna come up with, but I, I, I think...
So maybe ask him to just, to get both options repaven only, and...
Well, I mean, the scope of his project's already been outlined, and we told him to do it, so he's...
I guess paving would be included.
I can give you a pretty close estimate on Anderson. Okay, well, that included sidewalks.
You know, that street seriously needs, needs curbs, it needs sidewalks, it needs, it needs drainage, seriously.
And then all the semis can run over those curbs and break them.
Well, you know, that's, that's a tickable offense when they run over a curb, is it not, Cameron, they, they hit a curb, you can give them a ticket.
I've seen you do it.
Seen you do it.
Well, that's a good thing.
I saw a big old carrier for, looked like for a livestock coming down Harrod Avenue the other day.
As you guys go on with your meeting, after we get through my list, I'll run some numbers, I'll give you a ballpark on Anderson, just for paving.
Okay, okay, good.
So we're good with the first round of community crossings?
You want me to go ahead and send that in then? Okay. I'll get with Milestone and send out the noticeable award and notice proceed, and I'll let them get set. And also get, I have the notification of contractor award and request for funds for indoc that I've signed off on, if you guys wanna redo that, send it around, if you have any objections.
I talked to Nick about that, I mean, it's just a, basically an approval of, I mean, we've got paid, basically what the appraisals are gonna be, so it's not, I mean, that's what it is, giving us the...
What we, what we are on the hook for.
Right, right.
What is that again?
This is for crossings, that I've signed off.
Crossings, I thought.
We're talking about the parcels, for the right of way, right?
Okay. So suppose you want me to go ahead and run through mine, or where are we at on the agenda?
Who wants to do this?
I was gonna let James speak while he was here, he's, he's got an issue, we'll let him.
So where do you live, East High?
East High, eight-twenty-three, twenty-one.
Okay.
This problem had gone on for years, if I think I, if we lived in that, wait, wait what it states, we wouldn't have this problem. Nine oh one, East High, the old drug house.
Wow, that doesn't mean anything to me, I mean, what's going on?
It's a junkyard.
Well, it's a junkyard, so it's a...
The grass hasn't been mowed yet this year.
Really?
Sunday he came with a bush hog, I got pictures of how it looks, I'm gonna pass them around.
Pass those around here.
You wanna look at these? But he burnt his garbage, high in the house.
Yeah, does he do it during daytime or at night?
Night and day.
I know some people know they can't, but they, so they do it at night.
Well, we got a big problem when he first took the house over again, and started burning trees at eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock at night, and I got two garages thirty feet from where they were burning, and got corvettes in them, and I was kinda hot, but we worked that out, but they burn their trash, she's got a van, she opened the door, trash flopped out, she leaves it laying, ends up in my yard. I've had possums, raccoons, snakes, the grass is this high, sir, and he ran a bush hog through it, and all the pictures are there. During the wintertime, they put white rock in their front yard, 'cause they got stuck, and then the van got stuck, I got a landscape white house on the side of my house with a light in it, they ran it over in the snow, and then he says, "Hi buyer, kiss my butt", but it's just a nasty place, the house is, is a mess, and this has been going on for five or six years. And, you know, the chief came out and wrote him up, and I guess the chief saw her here at the building one day, he should've, well, that's my brother's house, that's his responsibility, clean it and get rid of the trash. People who live there seem me, but this has been going on.
I thought we had that report that he wrote up on May twenty-fourth of this year, with pictures of past, if you would like to see it.
But this has been going on for, for years.
Yeah, that's a mess.
You know, we're, we're not the richest part of town, but we try to keep our houses looking nice.
Is the brother employed, I mean, the other option is we go in and clean it up and bill the...
So...
I think Jeff did it once.
I don't know anything about him, the other brother, John, that was living there at the beginning of the year, that was, that had the utilities hooked up, that was run out to the camp, he works for Department of Corrections, he's one of the training officers of the prison here.
And he was easy to get along with, we could talk eventually, but his sister lives there now, and some other guy with her, and...
Is he, have you seen him recently, or is he still in jail?
I thought, well, for the original, I'm still in jail, I think, but there's another guy there now.
Well, we have to turn it over to legal department, and they'll pursue it, it's not...
You see, look, he took a bush hog through it, you can have him, sir.
Yeah.
He took a bush hog around the house, and it's stacked up this high, and it still leads as high as your waist with a bush hog, even, you know...
So they live in a house and a trailer, what's all...
No, the trailer's gone now.
Trailer's gone.
Better get rid of the trailer.
Yeah, we took care of that.
They had it hooked, it was too.
The roof of the house, when they, when he got busted for drugs, meth away from it, they tore all the wiring out, somebody put new wiring in, I guess, and got it reconnected. And you took the pictures, the windows are boarded up.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's just, and back thirty years ago on, we've been there, her grandfather built the house we're in right now, my wife, we were young folk, now we're the old folks on the hill now.
I know the feeling.
Well, thanks for bringing it in, well...
Yeah, I'm not trying to be a big complainer, you know...
Oh, it's legitimate, yeah, yeah.
But Jeff, you know how it is down there.
Mark, and one of the reasons I'm here tonight, one of the, one of the other neighbors on that street that asked me to bring it up too, was the house living across from it, and this has been going on, I think Nick's already dealt with it one time.
Yeah.
And now there's a new window in there, now there's a weird new air conditioner, so they're either living there, they're not living there, and you go on down about four or five more houses, and you've had legal action against that guy too, in the pole barn house, it's Confederate flag out front, and he's got piles of dirt, piles of lumber, piles of metal, and I don't, I drive by the, two of the guys today going back for it, Billy Creek, and it's just, it's just a shame that you watch, this gentleman right here, Lamar sees...
Lamar's my neighbor.
Neighbor, takes care of his yard, Donny Allison looks like a gust of golf course down there, and you got just crap you gotta look at, it's on Jackson Street, it's everywhere, and the thing is, I'm cruising around, he sees it, I see it, the town needs to start seeing it, they're blowing grass pippings in the road, they're not supposed to, it's an ordinance, enforce the ordinances, and this, this thing you got in your hand here with Nick going to take legal action, I remember from me, months ago, that meeting that was gonna, something's gonna happen to that house, and nothing, I don't blame these folks, and the neighborhood, speaking of, it was very absurd out there.
Do you have a list of complaints, I mean, do you have a list of...
I can rattle a few of them off if you'd like.
Well...
I don't wanna name them in a meeting.
Well, that's why, I mean, if you have something...
I'll let you know.
Well, I mean, I'd give Nick something to, hopefully, you know...
But I understand, if the ordinance says they can't be that way, why are you fifteen witnesses?
I agree, I mean, I'm, I'm not arguing with you.
Well, there's due process, and that's the crappy part about it, I think, there's the due process you have to follow to, 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 I mean, correcting Cameron, I'm wrong, I mean, basically the process we have to follow once it's filed.
Once it goes to court, they give them so much time to clean it up, and then if they don't, they're supposed to be fine, but then they make a little bit of progress, and then it starts all over again.
Yeah, yeah, that's a darn thing, and it just starts right back over.
A little bit of progress can be as simple as...
Running a bush hog through it.
Well, the bush hog down the side, you know... And there's cars there day and night, and that's all night long, and we go bed early, my wife's on dialysis for kidney replacements, we go bed by seven-thirty, but you can hear cars on that, you know, in there.
Well...
Jeff took care of my one problem on that, about electricity, appreciate Jeff, you know, Lamar's on oxygen, my wife's on, you know, kidney dialysis machine, and power goes out, and he helps us out with it.
Try to let you know, though.
You're doing good. I just wanna bring it up, 'cause I, I'm tired of looking, I tell you the truth.
Yep.
I'm not the most richest guy, or the most beautiful house, I try to keep it looking good.
Well, I feel your pain with it, believe me.
I appreciate it, I...
I mean, I know these people, so...
And I try not to complain too much, I, this is the first time I ran a bush hog in all years so far, you know, and I try to bite my tongue a lot, I'm saying...
So is the one that works at the prison, is he not the owner of the property anymore?
He never was.
Oh, okay.
He's just the brother.
I think he owns it, don't he? And the daughter, the sister's suite stay in there?
So there's two brothers, and then the sister. The one brother, I don't have any idea where he's at, where he lives, what he does.
He was a druggie, I'm pretty sure, the one went to prison, I don't know about him.
Can't comment on that.
The other, the other brother, the one that was staying there a few months ago, the one that you're familiar with, he does work at the prison, and he is here locally.
Yeah, you know, and we had, we had words at first on a few things, we got that worked out, we talked right now, you know, but I'm, I'm blown by hearsay now, it's his sister living there.
Well, Lydia's house even habitable, I mean, I mean, there's, what's about health code?
I can't, mainly if there's raw sewage discharging into the house or onto the property, that's about...
About it.
Yeah.
I assume it's zoned, well, it's being used as a rental property, I assume it's probably zoned that they could do that.
It's not being used as a rental property.
Heavy was there when they did the drug bust, and I said, "Heavy, let's get rid of it", he goes, "Well, put a match to it", I go, "Who are they gonna come see?" That happens, and they, they put it for sale for a while once, and they tracked thirty-eight-thousand for that junk house, you know, it wasn't worth that to pay for it, if we didn't have what reason, I'd have bought it and tore it down, you know, but...
Yep.
But I appreciate the word.
Well, we'll do what we can with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Jeff, take care, buddy.
Well, Cameron, you're standing up, you might as well take care of business.
I'm standing up only because my butt didn't bend in those chairs, so, got information I promised you, it'd be our event monitoring that we've, I, have started doing, just to kinda help you guys out and let you know what we're doing.
That's Little Pond.
And then I also have call numbers for, for us, and the second page would be the Sheriff's Department to give you a comparison of what we're doing on a monthly basis. If memory serves me correctly, we're about six-hundred calls for the year behind the Sheriff's Department, or less than six-hundred calls behind them for the year, which you figure they've got four-hundred-and-forty-nine square miles more than what we do to patrol and twice as many staff, I think we're doing pretty good to keep up. Our individual call numbers are pretty well right on pace with what they're doing, and in some cases exceeding what they're doing on a monthly basis.
So, Cameron, the, the, I mean, this report ties to this report, right, I mean, these...
Uh, it does, to a degree, you're, or the...
Well, not all the calls are in here.
Not all the calls are on there, those are significant events only.
These are the, okay.
The, to put in there that, you know, we conducted a traffic stop on this day at this time, and talked to this person for two minutes, and said, "Hey, your plate lights out, you need to get it fixed, have a good night".
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah.
It's not noteworthy enough to, I mean, just a general conversation at that point, but that's, that big packet is the significant events, the, the newsworthy, noteworthy things that, that we've done. In addition to that, twenty-four arrests were made in the month of May. As of May thirty-first, we have investigated, or are currently investigating, a hundred-and-sixty-eight crimes, it's a pretty big increase over the last three years. To start, the month of June, our case numbers for twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, and twenty-twenty-one were ninety-four, ninety-six, and a hundred-and-twenty-six respectively, so being at a hundred-and-sixty-eight, we're a month and a half ahead of where we were last year. Currently, as of, right now, our case number stands at a hundred-and-seventy-six, forty-five days ahead of last year, in twenty-twenty, case one-seventy-six wasn't generated until September. May of twenty-two, our officers made a hundred-and-twenty-two traffic stops in which citations of warrants were issued, among those were six felonies, thirty-seven misdemeanors, forty infractions, and a hundred-and-fifteen warrants.
Majority of those in town.
Majority of those were in town.
So what, not counting your, your traffic stops, what's your biggest, I mean, what's the biggest crime that we have going on?
Not paying for gas.
Well, based on last year's data, the, you know, traffic was number one, second was J-four service, and that's the number of calls based on, and that's something I guess we do for the county.
We got a lot of, a lot of calls that we go on, our paper service bill, we haven't had a whole lot of those in the last several months, and we do make a lot of traffic stops, we've served several warrants, I can tell you that at least two of my arrests last month, so two of the twenty-four were on the same traffic stop with two different vehicles, we impounded two vehicles and took two people to jail, they were both intoxicated, they were both high on marijuana, they both admitted to smoking marijuana right before they got behind the wheel of the vehicle, and they just happened to make it into the middle of town before we did.
Is shoplifting picking up there now, with cost?
Not really, not even more than what it was, and got a few minor things here and there, and the bulk of the theft complaints that we've taken so far this year, that have been felonies, haven't been serious thefts in that the monetary value is less than a hundred dollars versus, you know, a much higher amount. Where the felonies come into play is more often than not a prior conviction, I know of four or five dead that fall into that category. four or five dead that fall into that category, and of the four or five, two of them were the same person. But to answer your question, we're dealing with a lot of domestics and we're dealing with a lot of drugs. Drugs are really, really bad right now, uh, more so than they've been in years past.
I was told they're starting to make fentanyl in their homes.
That I can't answer to.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can tell you that we've seen a significant amount of fentanyl in methamphetamine and that that is an ongoing problem and happening, it has been for twenty years at this point.
Those synthetics, you lace it with fentanyl, that's bad value business.
Yeah, it, it, it's a horrible thing and ultimately it's, it's a poor man's speedball at that point.
I mean, the ERs are saying that that stuff just makes people, they said they had a guy, you know, you can tase them five or six times, it doesn't even, doesn't slow them down at all.
Like meth and fentanyl, you're talking two different drugs from two different drug categories that do completely different things. Stimulants are up, so everything, your heart rate, your blood pressure, your body temperature, your tolerance for pain, your you know, motor skills are exaggerated, but then on the other hand, you've got narcotics that are supposed to slow everything down. When you put the two of them together, you don't know what's gonna happen. One minute they could be passed out on the ground just completely lethargic, unresponsive, and the next minute they could be superman.
So are you guys looking into this at all? I mean, the safety commission, you guys, my man.
We gotta meet about this, uh, this month, but, uh, we might talk about it prior to meeting.
I don't think we have an answer to the drug problem.
I can tell you that we've reached out to state and federal agencies for help. I talk with them quite regularly. Unfortunately, they are just as busy as we are and for this area, we've got we've got one DEA agent that's assigned to this area and he deals primarily with Terre Haute because.
Cause they're bigger, yeah.
Yeah, it's Terre Haute and that's a far bigger problem, but they are getting to the point where they understand that some of the things that we have going on here are comparatively just as bad, if not worse.
Well, let me ask a question here, back to these, these homes like this. What happened to that blight program?
I don't know, I don't know if it's still being funded or not, David, uh, the time, you know, one time there was a blight program.
I know they cut back on it, um.
But, but, but the house has to be condemned, it does not, the building has to be condemned.
I don't think so.
We can't go down an occupied house.
Yeah, because.
If it's a blight, there's a difference between being a blight and being unlivable.
Okay, well, how would the blight program apply to a house that's inhabited?
Well, they need to alleviate the blight on the property or.
Well, I don't know if there's funding, I'm, I, I'm just questioning how.
Trying to get around to.
Where are you going?
Is, that's a lot of our issue on the drug part of it, isn't it? I mean, a lot of these homes are blight homes, would consider, consider them blight homes?
In some cases, yes. Quite frankly, most of, most of our drug problems are confined to two or three locations in town. There might be a couple of more that I'm not thinking of right off the top of my head, but for the most part the drugs that we are finding, the drugs that, the, the biggest problems that we have are people staying at the motel, people from elsewhere in the county coming in through town and we're just getting lucky catching them on traffic stops or doing other dumb stuff. The.
Drugs and.
Within three weeks ago, I caught a guy on Sunday morning at six oh five, pulled him over for driving while suspended and he had meth in the car. That one, I got lucky on that one. But I also knew that the guy had had a suspended license, verified that it was still suspended and was able to to pull him over and make the arrest and then just lucked into finding drugs in the car.
Well, yeah, I, I heard there was mention of this house there on East High Street, something, they, they actually were making fit, some type of drug.
This has been years ago.
Oh, it was years ago?
It was on the meth list.
Oh.
Meth registry.
Well, back in the day, a meth house usually got tore down, didn't it? I mean.
You have, no, once you're on the registry though, you have to have a certificate from a certified cleaner. Um, it has to be professionally cleaned.
They got that certified?
I, no, that's why it's probably still on the list.
Oh. So there's no angle there.
And if you sell it, it has to be disclosed, but you know, sometimes folks that do that aren't always the most forthcoming.
Really?
Shocking, I know. That's why a lot of people call, they look, you can look at the registry of meth houses. I had somebody not buy a house because it was on the list, they were gonna buy it and they found out and it hadn't been remediated.
Well. I mean, obviously we need to, I know there's no solution to this, but maybe we can chip away at it.
I don't think it's just our community, I was in Greecastle at the park and they've got a sign hanging up on the park pavilion about Narcan.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a hell of a world we live in.
There's only one thing that Narcan's good for, is bring you back from too much of the other stuff, but it's like at the park.
Yeah, and there, there's a lot of, um, inaccurate information out there, just because you have Narcan doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be effective on an overdose, because Narcan's only good for one type of drug.
It's not really good on synthetics, is it?
It works and sometimes you have to hit them two or three times, but it, um, is only good for narcotic analgesics, it's not good for stimulants or depressants or dissociative antidepressants. Anything else but narcotics.
Well. Obviously we're not gonna solve this here, but.
So what else we got here? What's this thing about room reservation, Cameron?
Email, I, well, we, we talked about it, I just put it on there, I'm thinking that Randy would be here this evening, um, because he sent the email. I think he included you guys, but he did send me just a, um.
Are those classes not offered over at ILEA?
There's a lot of training that's not offered there.
I think they just did an active shooter training.
The one that he wanted to attend, so I was gonna get a preservation made for him.
Well, okay, so, so this is education, becoming out of education fund, I assume we, I got a little bounce off the top of my head, we had ten more, didn't we?
Continuing education, but. And I think the class, if I remember right, I think the class was free, it was just the, um, the overnight stay, yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll move.
Second.
I'll second.
Don't move.
All right. Do you have anything else, Cameron?
So, last month, I completed SFST instructor school, it was the, so field sobriety test.
Oh.
And it's a program funded through NHTSA, through National Highway Traffic Safety. Course was at no cost to the town, was gone for five days and I walked away with a shiny certificate saying that, you know, hey, you passed, go forth and prosper. In addition to that, I've been trying to find, uh, an active shooter instructor course to get to sometime in the next couple of months prior to school starting, I figure with the string of recent events, that might be a good thing for.
Well, have we had, the department.
For allow this to go to.
Have we had any active shooter training at all in our department?
Not since I've been here. There were two that went to a course that was put on by Federal Law Enforcement Training Center in twenty sixteen. To my knowledge, there hasn't been any kind of training since then. I tried to get to a course in Chicago this week, but the spots filled up before I could.
Well, I think it's a good example of what not to do, recently in the news, uh.
Right.
Yeah, what a mess.
There are, there are free courses out there that are put on by Fletzey, however, the instructor course is something that I've been looking at a little bit more than just a, you know, a threat management course. Going to an instructor course gives us the availability to host training later on and either provided at no cost to other agencies, other departments that are looking to do that or, you know, charge a small fee, you know, for our time and our efforts.
Right.
In terms of hosting that. Right now, I'm just looking, um, trying to find alternative means of funding that. Right now, the only, the only tuition the only program that's not, uh, not requiring any kind of tuition piece through Fletzey and therefore for the year. Unless you wanna send me to Washington State for five days and pay thirteen hundred dollars for the course plus whatever it's gonna cost to put.
Washington State?
Yeah.
Huh.
There are other courses that are located closer, they, but they cost money. I'm just trying to find alternative means of.
Well, I think there'll be more funding coming out here soon for that type of training, given recent events, um.
I hope.
Yeah.
But other than that, that's all I got.
Number one, keep the doors locked. Number two, answer your phone and/or radio if you're on duty.
There, there's some things that we can do locally in, in the meantime, uh, testing the radios to see if our emergency buttons work inside the different buildings and we've already started having conversations about that, trying to, you know, mitigate the risk in between.
We used to do a emergency drill and include the schools, but, um, when the state fixed our radios, they haven't worked for the last few years, we're in the process of getting new radios, so I could put them back on the list to include in my call down drills.
Yeah, we, uh, we talked about it last week, there the biggest question right now for, for us, I think our radios will transmit will still transmit that emergency signal from inside our school buildings, but in the event that somebody you know, from the Sheriff's Department that's working off duty for us or working part-time for us is in the school and they hit their button with a different radio, I don't know that those radios will work, so I'm still trying to work those kinks out, but I mean, that's, that's a step.
Do you, do you think maybe the, they'll figure out maybe you need one in each school at this point?
I've been pushing for that since I got here, I.
It's the world we live in.
It, it is the world we live in and time is, time is money, time is everything. And if I'm at the elementary school and something happens, depending on where I'm at at the elementary school, it might be quicker for me to jump the fence and run over than it is to run back through the building, get to my truck and drive over to the high school.
Think of a little kid calling nine-one-one bleeding out and nobody goes in.
We used to have radios.
There's radios at the school, but whether or not, like, you're talking radios that are twenty years old, twenty plus years old.
No, they, they test with the current system.
They do, but they also have direct line of sight to windows versus other areas in the school that, that.
Do, do they keep their classroom doors, are they locked?
They're bulletproof, though.
No, but have you seen that, mainly with this big screw where they put a chain on it? Cause they've shown active shooters go where they.
It's not a good idea.
But they go where they can get easy access, turn the lights off, lock the door, they normally are gonna walk out.
There are things that we could do to, that are fairly cheap, maybe expensive, but that's, that's not a good idea. Uh, for a lot of reasons, but I'm worried with those right now, but there are things that we're doing, trying to help.
Is that all you got?
All I got.
Good. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Well, Jeff. Okay. Everybody get a copy of the, the little list there?
Yeah, I appreciate the brevity of it.
Knocked a few things off.
You weren't even asking for any money today, the big one after number one.
Okay, where we go?
So we accepted number one, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
And I'll get that sent out and everything good. Cleanup day is scheduled to advertise from June eighteenth, nine AM to one PM. Uh, talked to Bruce this morning, got an update from him, we're still waiting on clarifier drive to come in. Uh, still waiting on blower information. The raw sewage pump, although it, it has been installed. Now, the bad one, uh, the one that just went bad, they took it out. You know, gonna be repairs on it, but we have one good operational pump at this point in time. Also, the air conditioning unit that we approved last time is installed and operational, which is a good thing. On project status, the water improvement project, I noticed Cindy sent out a, uh, uh, email saying that the public, second public hearing, uh, for that project would be on around July first.
Is that our first meeting in July?
My first day.
It's July fourth on Monday, so we, July fifth, was that a, that was a date she gave you for a meeting?
It was in there, it just said on or around July first.
Then maybe we're doing it our first meeting?
There's, there's an email on that. Forty-one North Sewer Expansion, I still haven't heard anything about the right away issues there, I'm assuming they're ongoing. We talked to Brian Hood today, we should be ready to go.
So what's your next step?
Well, he's gonna call the papers.
Okay, so he's gonna start the process, okay.
Process, he's gonna be in vacation for a couple of weeks. So he's gonna have the advertisement schedule, the bid schedule, all that stuff ready to go and have some papers, okay.
We'll pay for it.
So the right way is complete?
Okay.
Bids are underway.
Or yet, Jeff.
Well, advertisements are. Yeah, yeah, yeah. South Market Street, um, got a late breaking parcel, I sent it out for the end of the day today, so we got that. But we're trying to get these turned around as quickly as we can.
So, so where are all these paper, all paperwork for that?
I have them.
You do?
I do.
That's exciting.
I know.
So, so on the Fisher thing, is it Fisher property, we're, we're good on that?
The one that, yeah, I got, you guys the response back from Ken Olson on that one, so it's included here. That was the twenty-five thousand one fifty.
Right.
There were two new ones that came in, a parcel four, parcel ten, those are the names and, uh, actually, this one, we can.
Holy moly.
Yeah.
I'm amazed at the severance damage being awarded these people.
Is it cause it's farm ground, I'm assuming? No. Well, have you seen the price of real estate lately?
Yeah, but I mean, one, one.
Those numbers are crazy.
One tenth of an acre. Uh, point oh seven, I mean.
I know, I, I looked at them.
When did you? Well, well, it is what it is, folks, if we're gonna do a road, we're gonna have to do it.
So we're here.
So we have three parcels, right?
Making a motion.
I'll move.
Do we think we're ever gonna be done with these?
Well, yeah, there's only so many, it's a finite number.
We seem to keep finding. And how many have we done?
Yeah, the road doesn't go on forever.
We've done ten out of twenty-five.
We're about halfway through.
Well, we're good.
When do we have to be done by or we lose the money?
Uh, the structure point has a deadline set of mid of August. And I emailed Suzie today to find out when the drop deadline is or.
I moved.
On the three, right?
Yes.
Fall of favor.
Well, not really, but.
You do.
Yeah.
You're gonna stop it.
Well. That's our tax, federal tax dollars, how hard it was.
Thank goodness.
Ready for the next item?
You bet.
Jefferson Street Project noticed, seeing contract docs sent to fights, uh, today. Ken will schedule a pre-construction meeting with them, I'll let you know when that's scheduled. And, uh, Fight says that they have a crew that's wired up and ready to go.
Even better, hell.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm expecting to get this thing rolling and see. They do know the limitations on it, right?
Oh, oh, yeah.
It's gotta be completed by ten, I think ten-seven is, is what.
There is that piece of curb that has the, the, that Mary Nicola brought up there, the alley, that needs to be cut out before it gets forgotten, Jeff, I don't know what we're going to do with it, uh.
Piece of proof, all right.
There's a curb, curb.
It should be right there, pretty close to the alley.
Between Asbury and, and, and Coors Building, the alley, well, you know where.
I'll tell you what, I'll run over there, uh, sometime and grab you when you're at the store and you can just show me. Show me what you guys want done. If it's just cutting out a piece of concrete, we can probably do that. Uh, I've got some areas over by the VFW, also in that little alley that goes in between there, for the. Port of back, that, that place is a mess too, uh, so I'll do what I can with it.
Where's that?
Uh, next to the VFW, the little alley.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a mess, yeah, yeah.
Alley that goes between it and what used to be.
Yeah, where they park back there, bumpers.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, we've got some work to do there also. Jackson Ward East Beetle Project, still pending, uh, water extension east project. Uh, I don't know that we've had any movement on that in a while. Uh, I think it's pretty much dropped off the, the plate as far as I can tell. If not, let me know and I'll try to get. Some action going on it. Item G, documents sent to Charge Point, uh, all they're waiting on is for us to get the pre-work done. And the pre-work basically is involving running our conduits, set our concrete pads. And, uh, once we get that type of stuff done, they come in and do everything else. So, uh, we'll get the guys laying some concrete and some conduit and get that going.
Roger is gonna pin those, right? So you know exactly where they're going?
Yes. Uh, water, water main repair on Martin Street, you Mac, we're still waiting on that. Same with the hydrant replacements. Uh, I mentioned blower replacement project, uh, wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we don't have any new info there. The roof repair at Beachwood Park Pool House is completed. Mr. Fisher. Did a great job on that. He did it on time and, uh.
Did you talk to him about doing the little room two over the?
Pool pump for the baby?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
What was his name again? You remember his name?
Levi.
Levi.
Fisher.
Fisher.
I've got his contact number so I can do that.
We approved that one, I should think, and then we reaproved it.
Beachwood Park Pavilion Painting, we did that also. That was to Mr. Ke. Brandon, if you get, uh, a chance, can you send me an electronic copy of that Keesey's bid? Just copy it, email it to me if you can, or I can grab it and do that. Deckard light replacement Beachwood Park, waiting on materials. Once those get there, we can get those fixed. And looking better, and the last thing, I'm pleased.
All done.
And happy to report that we are completed with new hope on our end. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's good.
Have you had any more calls down there since?
Couple things, Jeff, or just for everybody's information. Stormwater board, Kevin, everybody else, uh, meeting be, uh, fifteenth this month, uh, five PM, is that seven or?
I think so.
I, uh, I thought we moved it back.
Thought we moved it to.
To seven.
That's five.
No, it's some other meeting. We moved, okay, yeah, okay, five. So, yeah, probably for the discussion there about the, uh, Jackson Borhees. Uh, stuff going on there. Another thing, I just questioned Jeff. I saw Keith and someone else out, it looked like, uh, working on some of those covers last week on forty-one, the lights, uh. Did they have any success?
Yeah, we, we kinda stole from Mr. Ferentz and his idea.
You didn't steal it, huh?
Oh, yeah, uh, so what we did is we ended up, uh, well, we went through about seven or eight drill bits, but.
Yeah.
We used some, uh, stainless steel self-tapping screws.
Yeah.
And drilled some pilot holes and then Keith was able to take and. Shoot those back in there.
Good deal.
They are, they are secure and, and the guys did a really nice job on that.
Good.
Please.
Okay.
Well, um. One thing I was down to park this weekend, uh, I didn't know if you noticed, but there's a couple of trees down there. There's one that's got some dead stuff in it and there's one that's dying, uh. I don't know what kind of schedule you're on. That one looked like it might have a whittemaker in it. It might.
Yeah.
I'm aware of it. So. I'm aware. Anything else, folks? If you see stuff that needs to be done, holler. Shoot me a text, shoot me an email. I'm gonna try to get on it. The guys been doing a good job. We, uh, had a fella come in with an excavator and a thud, he was doing work over here at vigilance. And I just happened to grab him and said, hey, well, you've got that here around handy. How about going over to our retention pond and.
Oh, really?
Out some of those, uh.
Nice.
Trees that we had the county knock down for us.
Yeah.
So he did it. The price was right on it. I'll send you the invoice, but it was under my threshold of spending.
Good way to do it.
And, uh, so now what we're doing is taking the skid steer with our grabber claw and going back to the spooking. Yeah.
Have you got sprayed or you, you've got any crossbow yet around it? Yeah.
Yeah, did that, uh, Friday.
Good.
We hit that and we hit our ditch north of the football field.
Good.
And, uh, getting ready to do the wastewater treatment plant hillside is our next step to do that, so.
Yeah.
Didn't do it.
Yep.
That it?
Thanks, Jeff.
Brandon, you ready?
We have two separate claims, one leave for the end of the month and then this one for the first week of June, so we can close that out for meeting. First one's one million two twelve six sixty-two seventy-two and the other one's one seventy-one twenty-nine twenty-four.
My commotion.
Oh, now, hold on, let's, let's, uh, yeah.
Some things in life are constant.
Well, you should always look at them.
I did.
You have no comments? So that software voice, what do we, what's that software? What, what, which one?
The enroll program for Keystone.
That's what we use here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Billings here.
Butt sucker. Cost, oh, good lord. Um. We've got a four thousand chemicals, well, how long will that four thousand chemicals at the pool last, Jeff?
Not long.
Not long? Okay, uh.
But the other thing I'll mention too is the guys really doing a good job on, uh, keeping track of that.
Yeah.
Tony's picked up a lot of it, uh, he's been kind of helping with that a little bit too.
I've seen it down there on West End.
They've, uh, Tony's put in a lot of time on that, so I appreciate his influence and so far off our tests have come back good, so.
Yeah, it was good.
Okay, I see we got the roof payment, got the HV system down at the, hang on, you moved?
I did.
I'll say it.
All in bayer.
Five thirty, I'd say.
In case you haven't seen too, dinner on Harris Street where we had that storm.
Yeah, I saw Ricketts down there working on that.
We've got a lot of the third work done and, uh, we've got it seated in straw, so it's a little bit better.
Yeah, John was down there throwing straw. What else you got there?
Um, well, I already got the dust compensations taken care of and then, um, I was asked. And I had many complaints on the community center.
Uh-oh.
And then. And.
Her nurse swept the floor the other day.
And I don't know, um, we need to organize some type of a schedule to get that cleaned, but. I was in there, somebody wanted to rent it last fall and. It needs to be addressed at least once a month or, you know, something, but I don't, there, it's been an ongoing thing here lately, um, with several complaints.
Who's all using it?
Well, when we're renting it out too for people, um, the, are they meals on wheels? Is that the?
I think so.
Um, I mean, they're in there to do their meals, um. But when we, when it's left and it's not clean, you know, over time, and then we've got people that are coming to. Here to rent it.
Is this an accumulation of people who rented, who left?
No, I just, it's just like cleaning your house. I mean, something that you've got to keep up on, but you can't just let it go until somebody wants to rent it, so. But I don't know what you guys wanna decide or work with Jeff on getting a schedule down so that that can be, that facility needs to be cleaned.
Well, what, what kind of cleaning services are, there's cleaners out there, well, home cleaners, let's say, out there in the, uh.
There used to be somebody that, I don't remember who, somebody used to come in and clean this office like weekly or bi-weekly.
We do have. Some kind of an ordinance if, if you're renting it, that you do clean it up and. But who inspects it afterwards to say that, you know, you did a good job?
It's not a huge deal, but like, usually, and I said it more than once to somebody that we closed today, which was no big deal, but. I said, just put everything back the way you found it and nothing was put back. All the tables were folded, the chairs were thrown on top of all of our stuff.
Well, you know what, okay, so, so how do you enforce that? I say, well, bad you.
Well, you don't, they don't get their deposit back, I guess.
Okay, we get a deposit, we get a deposit.
Well, I think in, in a situation, you know, who's telling the person, you know, is there any guideline that they're being given? No, they're just renting it, they're paying their, you know, fifty dollars and they're not expecting to go in there and spend hours on to clean. I wouldn't either. I'd be, I'd be pretty upset if I had to spend a few hours cleaning a facility that I rented to have a party at.
Is there a deposit required? Other than the rent?
They're, they pay a fifty dollar deposit, but like I said, who's going in there and checking to see what's been done?
Yeah.
I mean, that's not. So I think there just needs to be some clarification, some cleanup, um, done on the, the rental.
We collect fifty bucks, pay somebody to clean it once a month or every two weeks.
Do we need the building?
Do we need the building?
Does the town need the building?
My opinion is no, but I'm, I'm sure that others would say yes, so.
Yeah, I don't know all the, all I know is Wheels on Wheels, historically, they've used it occasionally, but there can be some other groups that use it.
Is it, what, what condition is it in?
It's not in bad shape other than it needs mopped and trash needs emptied.
I don't know about the roof infrastructure means.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, I mean, obviously it was torn down and the front wall was saved and redone, but I think there was water issues. Early on, on the floor, coming up and.
I thought that was in the other building. I'm, that, that problem stemmed from the other building and it backed up into that.
Okay, okay.
So there's no old issues or anything like that going on?
I mean, that thing's not, there can be more than. Twenty years old as far as.
Kitchen's in good shape, relatively.
I, I know, I tore it down, so I, but I don't remember when, so.
The force could probably use a good stripping and waxing and it could probably use a good coat of paint on the inside of it.
I mean, and I'm just throwing this out there, but. Obviously, well, there's what, two, four, six of us sitting at this table. Probably each one of us could walk in there. Some of us are gonna say it's clean enough, some of us are gonna say it's not clean enough, so you're gonna have to have some kind of, I mean, either one person. That's gonna be a standard that goes in there and says, you know, so it's great for, uh-uh, you're not getting your deposit back, we're cleaning it and da-da-da. I, I mean, that's my opinion, so.
Well, I would be opposed to having someone clean the darn building once a month at least.
Yeah.
And if they, and perhaps using, of course, who's gonna follow up after it's rented? That's the thing. Cause it's rented and we don't wanna give the money back till we know it's acceptable.
Yeah, I mean, maybe something.
And.
But I mean, you still have to make an effort as a renter to, I mean.
Gathering your trash.
Once a month, I mean, you as a renter are gonna have to take care of your own business, take, at least getting the trash out of there and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Doing, you know, doing your standard cleaning, you know, wipe the tables down.
Maybe there needs to be a list of things that are expected of and take your trash.
Well, you know, it's not a bad idea. Every time you go to a.
Turn the air back to whatever temperature.
A timeshare property, they, uh.
And I mean, one of the people was told to put the tables back the way they found them and they didn't move the tables at all.
Charge a car.
It was cause they had to clean, but nevertheless.
Well, I, I, I'm not looking to throw more on Jeff or his crew, I guess, is one thing I'm thinking. I mean, we're gonna have it.
His crew that is extremely diminished from what it once was.
But we're gonna have it cleaned, it needs to be cleaned, I would say hired out. Uh, but then the need to have it cleaned shouldn't be. Grand because, uh, because.
I lost my, uh.
You lost your school.
Lost my crosswalk in common.
But, but, yeah, I, yeah, the, the list of expectations, uh, I guess you just can't rely on common sense anymore for people. But, uh. You know, it, uh, what do you want us to do, Brandy? You're the one who's where.
I just want you guys to make a decision on, or, you know, some suggestions as to who do you want to handle it. That person needs to be the person that's following up on it, enforcing, you know, the fact that, I mean, if you go in there and the trash hasn't been taken out, then they need to be letting us know. If you want my office to take care of it, we can take care of it.
Well, I'm not.
I mean, you know, it, it just.
I, I, I'm not sure who to take care of.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I just don't.
You guys.
I don't wanna overstep. It's not been a, a building, but the office is, you know.
You're not volunteering to clean.
Essentially been taking care, I'm not volunteering to clean it though.
No, I mean, like you personally, but your office is not volunteering to clean it.
Right.
Obviously, but you would go and look and say.
Right, I mean, it just needs to be, yeah, it, it needs to, there's just, it's. I would be disappointed if I rented that building and walked into what people have seen.
There's a decent broom, um, I think they should be required to sweep up if they're serving food, sweep up the crumbs and. Have a designated place to take the trash.
Do they prepare food over there or just serve it?
They just give it, Wheels on Wheels just gives it out. They bag it up.
Yeah, but they've got it prepared someplace.
They don't, it's pre, it's frozen.
Oh.
They're frozen meals.
Well, I think first of all, you put some kind of protocol list together that this is what you have to do.
Cause I think the only thing posted that I can remember is, it says take your trash out. I mean, is there, there's, I don't have a list of things that are given to anybody that rents that, so. You know, they're not signing a contract or.
How, how does they go about renting the, the building?
They'll call and schedule it or see if it's available.
Okay.
So, let me ask you this, is your office willing to go over there and, I mean, inspect it or do you want somebody else?
That's what you want us to do, absolutely.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna put any more burden on anybody either.
Well, somebody's gonna take care of it, is the thing.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, and so if we have to take care of it, then that's what we'll do.
They're cleaning services, I don't know why.
Well, I'm just talking about.
To make sure it's.
To make sure that people have done what they.
Why don't you have, come up with a list of, you know, common sense expectations, I mean.
Sweep the floor, take out your trash, put the tables back the way you found them.
Wipe down your table.
If there's nothing there, we should have something. We should have something.
Wrap with bleach on it and wipe down the tables and you're done.
When someone walks in there, they shouldn't have to clean up other messes, so.
Right.
I mean, stuff should be ready to go where those people can set their tables up and have their party.
Karen, you, you seem like you have something on your mind down there.
Number one, I just can't believe you're trying to clean the community center in the block of science, but. It seems to me that, you know, it's like at Billy Creek, you know, here's the contract, it's five hundred dollars, that's what you gotta do. That's what we're gonna do, and if you don't get it done, you're not getting a deposit back.
Yeah.
Now, that's what she's saying, but I'm not sure that. Somebody in that office or somebody from someplace couldn't just run down there at five minutes after they got done and said, you know, send, send Mandy down there. It's good to me, they checked off the list and your deposit back.
Yeah, and that, we don't mind doing whatever. I just don't wanna overstep, you know, anybody that's been maybe taken care of or not taken care of that in the past, so. You know, if we're asked to take care of it, we will make sure it's taken care of.
I agree, that's exactly what I said.
Just kind of further back on what woke on my mind is it seems like the, the, the common denominator here is there's a lot of ordinances and stuff like that. That we have, but then it always falls back, well, who's enforcing it? Who's checking on it? Who's gonna do this? Who's gonna do that? And that's why grass is this high, that's why meth labs are on, old broken down houses are on Howard Avenue still, there's brush piles. In that vacant lot that the park on Howard Avenue, you know, there's, so you've gotta put somebody on it. That's all you gotta do.
Well, if you guys are good with it, then my office will take care of it.
It sounds good to me. And I would make you a list and when people rent it out, this is what you have to do and, and that's the law in the school.
Got it.
And now we're gonna talk about the property on Howard Avenue, so.
Okay.
I think, are we?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna talk about appraisals. Nick's not here, so I know he's been in this discussion before, but, um, the appraisal for this Jefferson Street, there's actually a multiple interest on that. And the appraisal for the property on Howard Avenue.
Okay, so is Nick going to retain an appraisal or?
What's on Jefferson?
That base, or the house.
Oh, okay, again?
Or do you wanna do that? Hey, I don't care. I mean, if you wanna get it done, get it done. Uh, yeah, yeah, it sounds good to me. We obviously haven't, haven't done anything property on it. We, we solved, solved one white home that I think was there since we were all kids on Howard, but, you know, we had no, no use for the property. Apparently, we, we have enough to handle as far as maintenance and gra- uh. You know, my only concern, I don't know what the ordinance are as far as construction, but I would be disappointed to see someone come in and try to put up a, uh. Modular, I don't think they can. I know you can't do trailers on Howard Avenue, but I don't know about modulators, I mean.
Some of those modulars aren't bad looking if they're maintained.
Well, it seems the ones that pop up in town are the opposite. In general.
Well, the, the law in calls the modulars to start with. If they're not taking care of the.
Yeah, they aren't meant to last well. A lot of.
But, but there's some high dollar models.
Yeah, there sure are.
Very nice modulars.
My point is, it's a rural district and it should be an appropriate home, I guess.
Yeah, I follow what you're saying.
Okay, so anyway, sell the son of a gun.
Well, are you gonna put any restrictions on the law?
No, no, we can't. I'm just curious what the ordinance are, but our legal counsel would have to research that and see. Yeah, as far as construction, I don't think they're, I don't know, I don't.
Our attorney's not with us, so.
And perhaps one of the interested parties, as we sometimes do, perhaps the interested party could pay for one appraisal and.
Well, I would say Josh would know what we can and can't do.
Well, he'd probably be the quickest answer on that, yes. He's done a lot of reading there, I think.
If you'd like to reach out to him, you're on one of them.
Yeah, uh, okay, so I take care of that.
Yep. Oh, I have Troy's water contract that, if he wants to.
You sent that to us.
I did forward it, but I've got a copy if you have any questions or.
After Park has.
Basically that, that's just us taking over, keeping you compliant to them, taking care of the plant every single day. Doing all the testing.
After Park has questions, I'm making an motion.
And we've been doing that.
For a while now.
Yeah, so I mean, it's.
Yeah.
And we, and we put in there like with the leaks, if you guys get leaks, if you need help, whatever, you know, this flows nicely. You know, we'll come do the testing for oil orders and work with Brandy, we can issue it. I mean, we'll do all that.
Do you move, Lee?
I do.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
I, I. So. I guess.
On the, the, here's my, no, it's Brandy's, I'm sorry.
What?
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I was done. I was done.
I gave the mic and I like to sing.
I was, I was done.
I'd like to see that.
No, it's your turn.
There were a couple of things, I think, that will have protection, the, uh, five year update is due, is going to be due, um. So with those, there's a, there's a list of things you can do, we can try to do it ourselves. The thing is, I've got a guy that I've been using, I've been to eat, he usually does the five year update, gets them approved by them. And he's roughly like seven hundred bucks, seven, eight hundred bucks. And he does all, all the containment source inventories and all that stuff, um, he's got access to all that. I can talk to him and see, I've done one other that I've kind of walked through on my own. And we can try to do that again too, I don't care, but this guy is pretty quick. We got, we got a little time, but I think he just throws, see if he'll give us, give us a price, see what it costs. But it's like says, once every five years and this guy, you gotta do, you gotta go through your underground storage tags list and all that for everything and confirm it, and he takes care of all that. He deals with the state and sometimes it's just easier. Um, and then the other thing, I don't know if Bruce told you, but I got ahold of their guys with ECO because our, um, line, the grit line that we always clean out, it's, it's plugged up. And I know Doug and them, they tried to clean it out and we can't get through it, um, so we've kind of been putting it off, but that's what we got with ECO and they were gonna be close, they're supposed to let me know because they're gonna come with their big jetter and try to bust through it. And then while they were there, we haven't had that, um, channel cleaned out like we normally do, it's been over a year. We're gonna have them clean that out, um, where the fine screen is, whatever setup backs up, they always come through and, and clean that out. But that's just an hour of the family, it's not a real big deal, but.
The shank guessing needs to be done for this preservation of the screen.
Yeah, all that that backs up before the screen, they come through and power wash, clean it all, suck it out, but while they're there, we're gonna have them try to bust through that, that line, but, so they're supposed to, when they're out this way, maybe it helps with the trip charge, supposed to give us a call. And let us know, so this heads up on that. And that is all I got.
I'm cool.
I do like Kenny Rogers, I take requests.
Well, if I have any old business.
I don't know if it's old or new, so are we thinking, I mean, would anybody at this table take a job for fourteen bucks an hour? What are we gonna, what are we gonna do with our people? It's hardly, it's hardly a living wage at this point.
Well, we're probably gonna start in budget talks here in about a month.
And I think, you know, we bumped up starting pay, but we didn't really do anything for our people that have been here for a long time or even.
Well, again, I'd be budget talk. I hope everybody's prepared to, uh, it's gonna take some tough decisions. It, uh, everything's gone up and our rates are what they are and, uh, so, yeah, it'll be fun, Lenny. I'm glad you started the conversation.
When, when do you need your, uh, your preliminary budget worksheets, Brandy? June? Are they generally in June?
Well, it's up to the council when they wanna make, you know, make that determination. I have a meeting on June twenty second with the DLGF, um, but, you know, we just need to.
Jim Peach has submitted his, so I'd say you can work on it.
Yeah, even, even, even Squeaky, Squeaky Jim will call him, cause he's always on budget and Taeed and Squeaky Jim, I mean, he's looking at a ten thousand dollar increase.
Just.
Just, uh, mainly diesel.
Well, yeah, and fuel, I mean, are we gonna tell the police to park? Cause.
Well, that's a whole can worms there that we need, we'll need multiple sessions dedicated just to that.
Well, I think there's some things that they could do to minimize, lower their fuel gallons, not necessarily the price, but lower their gallons of fuel.
Well.
I would ask the safety commission to be involved a little bit in this, just.
Well.
With the budget?
On the budget, I mean.
I, I think you're, you're right, I think Steve's got it, hits the nail on the head, I think because of the current situation, I think, uh, to their credit, I think the guys spend a lot more of their own money on gas than I think we actually give them credit for because of the luxury of having this to be able to use, um.
What do you mean be to be able to use? What are you talking about?
What?
What are you talking about?
The, the cop cars.
Use them where?
You know, they, they, they take them to grocery stores sometime.
Well, in county, I mean, I, whatever happened to that thing where they were gonna go out of county?
Most of them quit doing it because.
I mean, somehow, because.
Well, did it get, I, I, I mean.
Yes, it was passed.
It was passed.
Holy shit.
And then it was scrutinized and.
It was passed by your board, public safety, okay. I didn't know that was approved. I thought it was tabled.
I believe it was approved.
Okay.
And I think what hap, has happened though, because there were some issues, some specific issues made or specific officers.
I offered them more money, they declined.
I know that, but I'm just saying, that was why that was off.
So that was one of the, one of the deals that was, but anyway, I think in a lot, a lot of ways it can be handled administratively, just Steve's point, is I think that we can set certain parameters under the circumstances, not to have to be permanent until the current situation.
Hopefully, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's, like I said, that's, I'm extending an invitation, so, I mean.
We could use a help.
We're not gonna solve anything here tonight, so, obviously, so, um. Jeff, uh, since we are talking a bit, a little bit about budget, are you looking to put anybody else on or?
Yeah, I think.
Just so we can be prepared.
I mean, if you seriously, I mean, if you, you know, I'm gonna, I, I would like to hire another full guy, full-time guy tomorrow, but, but the thing about it is, you know, we just, we picked up, you guys, uh, wanted me to go ahead and pick up that other one that we kind of robbed Peter to pay Paul for. And I really need to, to sit down and take a look at the numbers before we commit to anything. I, I know I'm shorthanded, we're gonna do the best we can, but I can't in good conscience say, hey, yeah, just give me another guy.
Right, right.
Without, you know, knowing how or how I'm not gonna pay for it, but.
How many guys you let off on vacation at one time?
Oh, it's kind of bad, so.
I'm not criticizing, I'm just curious if.
Uh, generally two or three.
These vacation sets are coming up.
Yeah. I think, uh, well, Brett's out right now and, uh, I think Doug Haslam coming up later on in June, Park's out for a couple of days this week. So.
Yeah. Yep. Well, that is, one other thing coming up is we really need to have a serious talk about cop time.
Paying some out.
How that's all gonna play out and what we're gonna do moving forward and.
I guess, Jeff, you asked about when to have some budget stuff, and I mean, we can have it by into July and we start talking and looking at it and, you know, the, the expenses this year have been astronomical in some areas, uh, and that's not even including inflation, just some repair stuff, so, um. Yeah, we need to look at, uh, start, start looking at it.
But I, I just remembered last year that you kind of told me to start working on that in June, I think.
Oh, yeah, I think the sooner the better, obviously, except Jim's already submitted his and I don't have, um, a time from the DLGF, I just have a meeting.
I'll, I'll go ahead and I'll start working on like our, our tax base stuff as soon as I can, cause I think that's.
Even by the end of June would not be a bad idea, um, you know, to have something at least submitted to look at and then there may be some changes after that.
Probably gonna be more discussion this year than last, if possible.
Probably. Well, yeah, I'm just very, very nervous about what's our general plan gonna be. Last year we had seven hundred thousand, uh, cause, yeah, I don't know.
I'll know more after I talk.
So you get some, uh, some, maybe some, some idea maybe from that meeting and.
Well, along those lines, and I don't wanna aggravate Steve at all, but, cause I want you definitely to be involved, cause you're a board member, but I would like for, uh, Chris, if he's, you know, willing, he probably needs to sit in on a budget for a meeting or two or ten to get a good feel for it, so.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'll reach out to him here in the next few weeks and.
Well, you know, I'll sit down, look at the revenue, historical revenue, you know, it doesn't matter what your expenses are, it's also historically, uh, you, you, the revenue was never looked at, but we need to look at revenue from utilities, the tax base is what it is, they tell us, but from the utilities, I'll see how close we came. I haven't looked at that for a while to what I estimated for twenty twenty one, what we actually had, uh, and then see where we're headed in twenty twenty two as far as year to date. And, uh, you know, take that to the end of the year and kind of guess, and I know what we, we have for twenty twenty three. But, uh, those numbers are, uh, just as important as the expenses, cause.
Yeah, I got a lot of tickets.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, it sounds like fun. Can't wait.
So, that was old business and new business wrapped up right there, okay. Uh, I do wanna say a couple of things. Number one, thanks to the fire department for being at the, uh, cruise inn with the ladder truck at Flag Out, had a lot of positive feedback on that. Uh, I wanna thank Allsoft and, uh, Allsoft Dealership and Main Street for putting on another cruise inn and it seemed to be a success, so. Anybody else have any comments?
Town's been busy this year, amazed the traffic on the weekends, uh, from all over, just amazing.
Yeah, I was up there Saturday, it was, I mean.
There's a lot going on.
Thirty-sixth was jam packed and the street was jam packed and. What'd you think, Kevin, from the Main Street side of it?
Uh, it, it, the crowd seemed a little thinner when I was out there for that way about three o'clock, um.
I agree.
Uh, yeah, again, a lot going on, strawberry festival and et cetera, but everybody seemed to be pleased with it, um, had some good feedback. You know, Park and I chatted, of course, there's a few on there that.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Said about everything, but, uh.
Well, I'm nervous.
Why did, why did they change the times? That's the biggest thing I heard, was it was too hot.
I have no idea.
Come up and sit in the middle of the day.
I think, uh, Allsoft, that's their kind, they've taken over that, that end of it, and they've got a really good job at organizing and all that, but, uh, I, last year I volunteered up there, but basically I didn't have to this year, so.
They didn't invite you back?
No, they didn't.
I just know the wine slushy lady had to go from calling them wine slushies to wine cocktails because her machine couldn't keep up in the heat.
That's not like a good wine slushy.
Hey, Dave, well, well, I'm kind of on the subject, and I'm not really trying to step out of my lane, but, you know, we, recently came up about the parking lot, the new parking lot, when it came to the festival and kind of had suggested that maybe public safety get that parking lot at the festival time, um, kind of briefly just mentioned to Jimmy Beach and see if, if they'd be able to handle that, you know, it could be the volunteers and the guys are days off, their wives, their kids, whatever, to park cars during Grinch Festival, which is, especially with, with the budget the way it is. I mean, you talk about five bucks a pop over ten days, that'd be a, a pretty good one. But since it's to Brandy, I mean, nothing's been set in stone today, it's not my authority, but the council might wanna consider looking into that or making.
I made that recommendation.
Well, Mandy and I have been talking about a few things, we'll get into at some point, but I'd also like to mention that Brandy and Mandy graciously volunteered to, uh, help with our founders.
Oh, okay.
A year and a half away, but it will be here before you know it, so.
But Brandy had helped with the Sesquicentennial, they did a parade and did some different things.
I wanna talk to Park about a couple of things on, on that end of it, but, uh, but yeah, I mean, I think, uh, like I said before, it should be a year, a whole year worth of events if we can make it happen, but.
He's also done some walking tours that are kind of cool.
I mean, I, yeah.
To get the history.
I mean, the way I, I look at it, hopefully, you know, we'll, we should be moving into our new, our new home that, that year. Uh, we should have an open house of some kind or should be some, you know, some rock hill memorable, memorabilia up there and, you know, plus, I mean, parades and picnics and whatever else we can come up with.
That piece of that concrete curb, we can be part of.
Piece of that concrete curb, I mean, yeah, so.
Okay, sounds like.
Anything?
Sounds like more meetings.
I threw you right under the bus, didn't I? Now you can't back out. She did volunteer. She just did though, so.
Sorry, it's okay.
Okay. But, no, she actually did volunteer, so. All right.
They usually, the last few times they formed a committee.
Well.
Get people to volunteer.
Committees are fun.
I, I mean, I'd, I just want somebody in charge of that, they can, you know, proceed as, as, uh, as they like.
Yeah.
So.
I'm moving to turn.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Thank you all.